Oh, boy.
Motion second return regular session with the clerk please call roll. Yeah, together two can.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams? Mott. Six forty.
Well, so there was a buyer.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams? Malat.
Do you not need us, Zach?
I didn't realize you guys are back on. Are you? Captain Stites, are you in the affirmative?
I mean, however you need it. If you don't need me to vote, I won't.
We've got the quorum in here, so I think everybody's good.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Detective.
Uh, let's see. I graduated in 2009, so summer probably taken down. And I graduated in nineteen thirty, summer of nineteen thirty. Did my internship um in the May till July, like the so then was my house. Was it wasn't anything? No, it's yeah. You were in Vanquark. Yeah, it should be on the field staff.
Oh, it's luggy in here.
Yeah. It's not even saying. Yeah. Be that part. We can have a beautiful.
Move to return to regular session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to return to regular session with the clerk please call roll.
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
LaLa?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda will be here city manager presentation related to American Recovery Act of twenty twenty one and its potential on this impacts on the city of Edwardsville.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna take my mask off for this. Uh, uh, yes, uh, so, okay, we have it up here, so thank you. Um, so you've probably have heard of the American Recovery or the American Rescue Plan. Uh, that was recently adopted. Do I have control here? Okay, sorry. There we go. So, uh, you've probably heard of this. Uh, it was signed into law on March eleventh by President Biden. It's a one point nine trillion dollar economic stimulus. Uh, and to help in long-term recovery from economic and public health impacts related COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, I know there's lots of political pieces around that, so I won't go into those. Okay, and, uh, so, sorry. Uh, so that's when it started, March eleventh, and there's quite a few pieces to it. Let's see if I can get this to go. Huh, okay. Maybe. There we go. All right. I, I would like to, before I get started on this, and I meant to say it on the first slide, uh, thank our friends over at Baker Tilly, uh, which used to be Springstead. You, I know y'all remember Tom Calico helped us with some financial stuff. Uh, they did a great webinar on this. There's also been some others done by the Leaks and the Kansas Association of Counties and things, so uh, I borrowed many pieces from their presentation with their consent, so I told them I was gonna use it. Uh, but out of that one point nine trillion dollars, about three hundred and fifty billion of that has been allocated directly to, uh, states in Washington DC, about a hundred and thirty billion to local governments across the US, and about another twenty billion to tribal governments. So I say that because those dollars are directly coming to states and counties and cities and tribal governments. So a little different than some of the past dollars. There is also, as you see in these nine blocks, a whole slew of other items. Some of those would apply to us, some of those won't, but those will go through some other process, a competitive process. They may go through the state and then we have to apply for them. So they're not coming directly to us, but they may be funds that are available to us for other projects. And I'll, I'll touch on one of those here in just a little bit. So, uh, the question that we will be asking, uh, is how can these funds be used? So clearly, the number one way is responding to public health emergencies. I think you'll predominantly see that being a focus of counties and state health departments uh, to offset the costs that they've had for vaccinations, future vaccinations, continuing those. Uh, responding to workers performing essential work, that's one of those areas I think it's still kind of up in the air. What is, what does that mean? Because there's question is, what is, what, what are essential workers? But, uh, generally speaking, you're, you know, certainly you're, uh, far as local governments go, fire and EMS, police, and public works and those frontline types of people, but there's a whole slew of, uh, essential workers. Revenue losses, which I think the estimate is that most cities will take this path. So for us, as an example, you had two months where there was no revenues coming from the casino. So the question is, is that a revenue loss we want to reimburse? Uh, I would ask the question is, is the county, because they're really the ones that receive those funds and then they suballocate them to us, if you remember on our cost sharing. Are, are they gonna make the request for those lost revenues and then allocate them based upon the formula place? And some of these questions just haven't even been asked or been able to spend any time on. But other revenue losses, whether it was sales taxes, whether it was, uh, fees, uh, we've had, uh, where we wrote off, uh, late fees, those types of things would be eligible revenue losses. Uh, the next one is, and I think this is one where we definitely want to maybe focus, our investments in sewer water and broadband. Obviously, we don't have the water system, uh, here in the city, but we do have the sewer system, uh, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about broadband and expansion of broadband. How do we upgrade, uh, access and speed to the home and to businesses? So there's that. And then the last one really is transfer of funds to other units of governments and nonprofits. That's somewhat what happened under the CARES Act, if you remember. So the county received money. We, we basically had an opening. People could make, uh, requests for funds for particular programs, whether it was for food or whether it's for housing or for other types of things. So in that case, the UG was the, because the county received those funds, then distributed them to both local governments as well as nonprofits. So very similar to the first round of CARES Act. So timing on this, uh, effectively, the first dollars, uh, so the first half of that one point, or I should say of the three hundred and fifty billion, is supposed to be basically on the streets, uh, by May eleventh. So it was sixty days after the initiation of law, so it could happen anytime in that time, but it should be here no later than May eleventh. Uh, and then the other half of that is due not sooner than twelve months after the first one. So assuming that if that money came on May eleventh of twenty twenty one, the second half would come May eleventh of twenty twenty two. All the funds have to be spent by the end of fiscal year, well, our fiscal year, but by the end of the calendar year twenty twenty four. So December thirty first, twenty twenty four. The good thing about that is, unlike what happened in the CARES Act, we have some time to think about planning for projects, preparing for projects, and then getting projects out to bid and completed. But we're assuming when they mean spend all funds, that means the money's actually spent, not allocated, not bid, but actually checks been written and the money's out the door. Again, there'll be lots of follow-up, I'm sure, from the legislatures of what that means. Uh, but it's like most bills, that's the wording, and so the assumption is spend the dollars before December thirty first. Uh, so there's two different processes, basically for entitlement communities and non-entitlement communities. So Edwardsville is a non-entitlement community. So typically, to be an entitlement city, you have to have a population greater than fifty thousand, and an entitlement county has to be greater than two hundred thousand. That's typically what it is. Uh, the UG, as an example, is an entitlement community. Bonner and Edwardsville are both non-entitlement communities. So for the UG, they will get their money directly from the feds. It will go to the UG. There's both the county portion and the city portion, which you'll see in just a second. Our money will go to the state. So again, if I use May eleventh, so the feds have to have it to the state by May eleventh, which means they have to have it to us by June eleventh. So worst-case scenario, if that's the way to put it, we would not see any funding until June of this year before we would physically see dollars coming to the city from this particular program. So how much money is coming? Uh, and I, and I just focused here for Kansas, but so Kansas, and these are estimates, they've been prepared by the Treasury Department, but they're not final, so they know how much the big pie, the big pie is, but they're still working out details. This is the most recent, uh, expectation of funds, so don't take any of this to be, this is exactly what it'll be, but this was the last formula that they used to tell us what they think it's gonna be. Our, our Congresswoman, uh, Sharif David has, uh, one of her staff members has sent this out to the communities and has kept us up to date, and so we appreciate the work that her staff is doing to help keep us, uh, in the loop and, and making sure we're part of the, the, the funding. But the state's expected to get about two point seven five billion of that. You can see about one point six will be retained by the state and will be used for those state programs. About one point one five will go to local governments. And again, local governments could be cities, they could be counties, they could be townships. So anything that's kind of under that, that level from the county and down. Uh, I don't believe that includes, uh, uh, any of the tribal governments. It's just local governments. So breaking that down further, uh, there are two separate fund sectors here. Wyandotte County is expected to get about thirty two million, so that's on the county side of the equation. And then on the city side of the equation, about almost fifty three million. So in total, under this scenario, they'd get about eighty five million dollars. I've seen other numbers that's closer to seventy, you know, seventy million dollars, but it's a large, large amount of funding that will be going into Wyandotte County. As we break that down for us and for Bonner Springs, again, both non-entitlement communities, we're gonna be somewhere between eight hundred and a million. Bonner Springs from about one point four to one point seven. Uh, all of this is based on the same twenty eighteen census data that was used for CARES Act. So they're using population as the mechanism to distribute the dollars. Uh, whether that's the right way or not, uh, I don't know, but that's the way it's being done at the federal level to push the money out.
What is the population of Wyandotte County?
Uh, I think it's just under a hundred and eighty thousand. It's like one seventy eight, one seventy nine, right in that range.
Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Since, since Kansas City, Kansas has less population than Wyandotte County, why are the numbers so much higher there?
I'm not sure I can answer the question on that. Uh, this is the formula they've sent out, and I'm not, I don't have a great answer for what the formula is. It, it doesn't, it, it seems like the, the county, but it may be because of how they're breaking counties out first and then, so the money coming to counties is out of a different pool or pot of money, and they have to distribute that then across all the counties in the US versus the cities. Obviously, there's more cities out there, and potentially, they put more money out of the three hundred and twenty billion into the city pot versus the county pot. There's still a lot of questions about this, and, and again, really just wanted to tee it up because I think you're gonna hear a lot about it. I think we'll spend a fair amount of time on this. Uh, but just kind of wanted to get everybody kind of thinking about it and knowing about it, and this is still pretty early, but, you know, what's gonna happen is there's gonna be funds coming to all these communities. And I'm guessing, in to some respects, it'll be a little bit like the CARES Act. The money comes, and then the rules continue to change as we go along. The good thing is, unlike CARES Act where we literally had a, you know, less than six months, we have time here to where we can set the funds aside. Obviously, they will go into a grant fund, it has to be separately accounted for, uh, and we'll set those dollars in there, and we have some time to make decisions, which will give people an opportunity to know what the rules are as we move forward.
Mike, this is, uh, Stites. Uh, do we know, and I know it's early, and I know I'm probably asking a specific question, um, but I wanna, I wanna make sure that this seed is planted before we, it starts to grow and it's already flourished and fruits come off of it and we go, oh, we're late. But will there be a committee at the, at the county level or a committee that will, uh, and I'm gonna use the word approve, our request for dollars?
No, in the sense that the dollars come directly to us from the state. So the money that I'm, I'm talking about to Edwardsville, the eight hundred thousand to a million, will come directly to us from the state, and the state receives it from the feds. So it never, it never goes to the county at all. Now, how the county is going to decide their dollars, I don't know.
Right, right. That's, then that would be because we are part of Wyandotte County. I mean, that pool of thirty two million dollars, I mean, it sure seems like, the way I'm seeing it and the way I'm thinking is that that should be, I mean, should include both Edwardsville and Bonner also.
Yeah, Mr. Stites is Chuck Adams. I just calculated, we have two point seven percent of Wyandotte County population. That would interpret to eight hundred and nine thousand dollars in revenue that should come to this city from the county.
Okay, I, I appreciate it, and I wanna, you know, hopefully we'll hear more about that, but I, I, I sure wanna make sure that we're on top of that and that we, um, are thinking, uh, that that should be dollars that are expected into, uh, our city.
Understand. And again, I, I just wanna caution on these numbers. Uh, you know, these are formulas that have been put out there. Uh, they've, you know, I, I would, I think they're subjective to change, but I don't, but I don't know but exactly how. These are the most recent numbers that we received again, uh, through the representative's office, uh, that came uh, from a group in DC, and my, my guess is there's, there's still a lot of questions out there, and these numbers will change. And, and so I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves as to what and how. I mean, there's, the, part of the difference in our numbers is they talk about whether it's overlapping or non-overlapping. Basically, you know, you have populations that overlap, different states treat that differently. So these numbers are good numbers, but I would, but these aren't final numbers. So I just, I, again, I wanna caution, uh, that, you know, I mean, they could go up or down. Uh, they could go, you know, the county portion could go down and all three cities go up or, or some change. So I just, just be certain that we know that, that we don't have the answers to most of the questions at this point. So I think that the number one thing that we're hearing is start getting prepared. Start making sure you have your accounting systems in place. Start thinking of how you want to potentially use the dollars from a planning standpoint, so that you don't catch yourself, you know, all of a sudden having dollars and don't know how you wanna spend them or spend them and then find out, oops, we couldn't spend that on, for example, roads. You notice in our, in our eligible uses, roads weren't in there, but there is a transportation bill tied to this, and there are dollars there that we may be able to, uh, connect to, but not necessarily these local funds. So again, a lot of questions still in the air. So, uh, again, the other bills, the other provisions, some of those would apply to us. Some of those may be businesses or our school district. Uh, again, there's, there's information in there about energy and water for household assistance. So, uh, I see we have our friend from BPU tonight, you know, as they provide water, uh, you know, they've had a lot of water customers that weren't able to make payments, and so they, they've worked on payment plans with them, so there may be homeowners in our community and throughout Wyandotte County, and these funds can get used to help, help them through some of these times. I would note on the transportation and infrastructure piece, we learned really just this past week that about five point three million dollars of additional STP funds is coming into the Mark region on the Kansas side, about eight million on the Missouri, but I think it was five point three. Uh, Dustin and I were on a call the other day. Uh, and so they're already like, well, how will that get allocated? So one of the discussions was, uh, we, we just went through a funding, we just went through the funding system. As you know, we got funded for Ninety-Eighth Street, but we were the last one to be funded and didn't get fully funded. And so one of the discussions was, well, let's fully fund Edwardsville. We were the last one. They didn't say Edwardsville, but, you know, we, we didn't fully fund all projects. Well, there was only one that didn't get fully funded. And then go down the list of other projects that are already there, that have already been scored, and that way we know they can get funded and paid, you know, money out the door by the end of twenty twenty four. There is also discussion that we have a new funding round coming up that will, uh, come out really later this year and into twenty twenty two. That will be the funding for fiscal years twenty five and twenty six, federal fiscal years. So they've talked about, do you put it in that pool but move those projects up? So I think there's, you know, there's monies, and not everybody's quite sure, but we know there's about five point three million dollars coming to Mark Region or the, or our area out of that transportation bill. So that seems to be pretty set already in that. And again, you know, there's another two trillion dollar, uh, proposal for additional transportations that's going through the federal legislative process now. So. So really, our, our question will be, what is our plan? How do we anticipate spending the money? Um, you know, I think there's a lo, a, a number of different opportunities. I would say, uh, you know, one, one area, and we've spent a lot of time talking about it in the past, is sewer, uh, expansion, specifically Betts Creek. Uh, sewer is one of those areas that they look at. So I think that is one area we should look at, is how potentially we can use that for expansion, especially in areas where, quite honestly, we know that there, there's not enough, you know, we gotta get from point A to point B, but in between, there's not a lot of connections or residential connections, so you're never gonna be able to charge enough to recover those costs for those areas. So maybe that, that's an option. Uh, back on the, under the, uh, Uh, back on the, under the, uh, uh, some of this, uh, other transportation and infrastructure and some economic development. So EDA, uh, Economic Development Agency is also putting out money uh, for business development or again, EDA focuses on infrastructure. We had some of the EDA funds on Wood End back in 2007, eight, right when I got here, uh, that, that we used and tied with, if you remember the old era. The, the last time we did a bunch of federal funding, I guess, or one of the last times on roads. And so, uh, there's potentially assets there that we might want to focus on. That would be more focus on building infrastructure to promote, uh, jobs. Really, it's, it's all around a job proposal, but you can use it for infrastructure to support those jobs. Maybe similar to some of the discussions we had earlier tonight. So that's just really a quick overview of the American Recovery Plan as it relates to local governments. Uh, if you just have nothing to do, I've read through parts of the bill or 500 pages. Uh, I may have, you know, as the joke goes, I may have read more of the bill than maybe some of the elected officials in Washington. As, as we hear oftentimes about who read the bill and you're not sure. So, uh, and I read parts of it and I still don't understand it. So, uh, that's again, it's really be thinking about what's our plan going to be? And if there's priorities as a community that you're hearing or thinking about, you know, how do, how do we use these funds for those purposes? So Mayor, that's it unless there's questions on that item.
Uh, if there are no further questions, uh, we can move on to the next item. But if you've got questions, please, please come in.
Yep.
Mike, on that, would it allow us to, um, use some of the funds toward a computer lab for, uh, community members to work or do school virtually?
Uh, there, there is a portion under the, the, uh, I think it's, I'm going to pull it up real quick. Under what's called the Corona Capital Projects Fund. There is money in there for, uh, those types of programs, broadband expansion and support. Uh, and I think there's probably some within the school system dollars. I mean, mainly it's focused on getting kids back into the classroom full time. That's kind of its primary focus. But, uh, I, I remember reading some of that on how they also can continue to promote distant learning and, and making that better than it, than it was. So, uh, there's also money around the Emergency Connectivity Fund. Uh, which again, that's around internet access for distant learning. Um, again, those programs will be competitive programs. So they'll, they'll be ran through some department of the federal government and will have to apply for those. But there are funds out there, uh, and it's just focusing our attention. Because as you might expect, when you throw 1.9 million dollars out there on the table, uh, everybody will be rushing towards the, the pile of money. Uh, and it's hard to believe, but I have no doubt that we'll spend, uh, that there'll be more than 1.9 million dollars worth of projects. Uh, when this is all said and done between now and two years from now, that's, that's my bet. So that's pretty typical.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's move on to the next item that, which is, um, the representation regarding adjustments to the city's pay plan.
So before I start, uh, I, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're clear on what the presentation is tonight because it, it's important. We're not talking about pay in the sense of how much does some employee get paid or a particular class of employee? It's really about the, the broader pay plan or compensation plan that we have in place and what needs to happen to it to make it an effective pay plan. So quite honestly, we, we, every year we have to make a decision of, are we going to fund it? Right? Are we going to fund our, our steps? Are we going to fund a COLA adjustment or are we going to fund one or the other or none? That will always be in the program, right? So that's part of the budget process. That's a decision that gets made then. There may be discussions in the future is, does that particular position, is it being paid market pay? That, that, that's another discussion. Tonight is really, how is our compensation plan that's been here for 10 years? How does it stack up and is it, is it working? And so I just wanted to focus on that. So, uh, again, not here to say this part, this employee or that employee should get more money or less money or some different money. It's really about what's our compensation plan and how does, how does it line up? And as you recall, earlier this year, we had some discussions and it, and I told you at that point, uh, we've been fortunate that the city of Bonner Springs and Baser both had compensation plans done in the last two years. Uh, one of them was, uh, by Baker Tilly. The other one was by Springstead, but of course Baker Tilly and Springstead today are one, one company, but they were separate companies at the time. And so you'll see a lot of reference to those because I think there are current examples out there and they're our neighbors. And I think we had some discussion about, you know, those would be good to start with and see and compare to. So again, that's the, the purpose of this, uh, presentation. So just a, a quick history, uh, we hired a company called McGrath Consulting. Uh, Victoria McGrath is one of the principals, her and her husband have the company. Uh, they do, uh, compensation plans all over the U.S. They also, if you remember, do a lot of public safety studies, fire and, and fire police studies. Uh, she, her background was in human resources. So she got a doctorate in human resources and worked, uh, in local government up in the Illinois, Wisconsin area. Her husband, uh, was a firefighter or I guess a fire, I guess he started off as a firefighter, but a long-term chief. So he kind of brought in the, the public safety, uh, side of the equation. And they, they put together a company called McGrath Consulting a number of years ago. And they, they've done a couple of different things for us. One, the pay plan back in 2011. And they also worked with us on setting up, uh, our actual job descriptions at that time. And when we went into doing the, uh, emergency services, the ambulance services, uh, provided some, uh, direction, uh, on that as well, helped us make sure we were asking the right things, right equipment, right staffing models, et cetera. So we put our program in in 2011. It is a traditional step and grade plan. Uh, as, as you know, step and grade is, as it sounds, you got grades and you got steps. The other one is, is generally, uh, you know, a plan that has a min, a max, or a, a minimum, a middle and a max. And people move on there, uh, based on annual adjustments. And so people could be at different places on it. So just two different types of plans. Uh, our plan has 26 grades, A through Z. Uh, some people use numbers, some people use letters. Uh, and when we first put it in, it had five steps in back, I think around 2013, 14. We first bumped up the non-exempt employees to seven, and then we moved everybody to a seven-step plan. So today we have a seven-step, uh, plan. Just to give you an idea, just graphically, uh, we have steps one through seven. Uh, we use the Roman alphabet. Um, we have grades, A, B, C, in between each grade is 5%, steps 3%. Uh, from the bottom to the top, so the range, the pay range. If somebody started at one and goes to seven, that range is 19.4%. Uh, today we have 49 positions in the city, 49 full-time positions. Uh, we have about 25 titles. A title would, you know, would be a person's title, police officer, public works director, police chief, whatever. Uh, and so you have people that, you know, multiple people in some titles. Uh, again, we use, we have 26 grades and we use about 15 of those grades. And you'll see here in a minute why that's somewhat of a, a problem for us, uh, on, on the number of grades that we use. In comparison, and I just did these alphabetical, uh, and this is the most recent plan that was put together by Baker Tilly. Uh, the compensation plan in Baser, again, they use a min, a mid and a max. Uh, and then annually they say, hey, we're going to do a cost of living adjustment or we're going to do a, uh, an overall pay adjustment, or they may say, we're going to give overall and then, uh, people compete and, you know, get scored and they might get 2% or 3% or 4%. Uh, in their model, of course, they don't have steps, uh, their grades are 6%. They use one through 19. Uh, their range is 45%. So person starts from the bottom to the top. Could see a 45% adjustment in pay over their period of time in that pay plan. Uh, they have fewer positions than us, 37. Uh, you know, size of organization, uh, in some respects, they're similar to us. Their police department and ours are about the same size. They don't have a fire department, so that's really the biggest change. And they have more people in utilities because they do water and wastewater. So some, some difference in jobs. Uh, they have 23 titles, uh, in, in theirs, again, 19 grades, and they use 12 of the 19 grades. So they have put quite a few people, uh, stacked them into a particular, uh, title or grade there. And then Bonner Springs, uh, again, this one's about two years old. I think they, they worked on it in 18, 19, uh, and then they implemented it, I think, right early part of 2020. Uh, and kind of right during the COVID time. So there was a little bit of a delay. I know that they had it. And theirs, they are a step and grade plan. Uh, like Baser, they have, uh, their grades have 6% gaps between them. Uh, their steps like ours are 3%, but as you see, they have 13 steps. So their range is 42.6. Uh, they have about 92, they use FTEs. So they may have a few more or less, but about 92 full-time positions. They have 50 different titles. Uh, again, they use 26 grades like us and they use about 18 of those grades. Uh, so similar to what we use as far as the number of grades used to the number of grades. Just also for reference, and I think some of this we looked at before. But so one of my questions was how does our, how does our range compare regardless of whether it's a grade and step plan or whether it's, uh, just a, a min, mid and max? Uh, so just, I just pulled cities off of the, so we're part of a thing called the Mark Compensation System. So it's called CSS, uh, Compensation Survey System. Uh, they work with a third party. And so we are a member of that along with cities all over the U.S. actually. Uh, but quite a few here, the Kansas City metro area. So just in comparison, you can see, uh, in our area generally, uh, the lowest one was Spring Hill at 35%, 35% percent. I see my typo, uh, and up to 50%, which was, you know, in there and then a lot of 45%. So you get 45.6% on ranges there. Uh, in Missouri, you see pretty much the same situation. Uh, again, uh, you know, you have ranges from a high of 52 in Belton. Uh, Smithville is 26%. So, uh, but again, the average is around 45% on, on their ranges. Again, it differs based on whether they have that mid, mid, min, mid-max model or whether they have a step and grade. But again, it just gives you an idea. So I, I say, what are the problems, uh, or what are the problems that are coming up? So the, the very first one is when, again, we only have a seven-step plan. And as you see here, we have 67% of our workforce is at the midpoint or higher in our plan or step four or higher. Part of that is oftentimes we have to hire people at step three or four to be competitive at the entry level. Uh, most of the people you see at a step one have probably promoted or have promoted. And there's enough gap between where they were and where they're going to. So say they're going up to sergeant position that they, we've got enough break in there to make that work. That's not true at all departments, uh, but that's kind of what happens there. But I guess the, the best way to look at the grade, so you know, again, the range, we have a lot of people that are going to cap out. We already have 11 that are capped out, you're going to have six more. So 30% or better of your workforce will be capped out on the pay plan this coming year. So that, that just, you know, that's the issue. The other issue is, yes.
When they cap out, they still get their increases.
No, they do not.
The COLA?
If we do a COLA, they would get a COLA, but they get no more pay increase, right?
But they'll get a COLA increase.
If, if we approve, but we've only approved that twice in the term of this, of this pay plan. That is one of the questions, right? So, so yes, there's, there's that, that's a challenge, so.
Not the end of the world, so, what I'm saying.
It is not in that sense, right? You're correct.
Uh, and also a, a, a cost of living raise also.
Well, that's what she's referring to is COLA or cost of living.
Oh, I didn't hear, I didn't hear, I couldn't hear what she, the word that she used. Okay, so she said COLA. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, COLA or cost of living, correct. So if we don't fund that, then there is no pay increase for that group of people. And I'll show you part of the challenge that that creates. But so on the grade side, so if I have somebody in that's, for example, at grade A, and this is true throughout, and they've moved all the way to step seven and we want to promote them for them to get a 3% increase, I've got to move them all, I've got to move them to grade C, step five. And so again, then they're going to, two years, they're going to cap out. So there's, there's not a system by where people, when they promote, there's enough spread that we, in our pay plan as it is today, that they really can get a promotion. And again, if they start off at step three or four, which again, happens a lot, uh, then that's not even possible. You almost have to go up five steps before you really get from the top of one range to the bottom of the other. So again, it's, it's compression. So I mean, it's really about compression of our pay system. Uh, that's the challenge. So a few examples of that. So again, we're using Edwardville, Baser and Bonner Springs again, because we, we have that data. So if I, if I look in here, please, and I, again, just, I took positions that were common to all three entities and, and data was available. So everybody has police officers, everybody has maintenance workers and everybody has utility clerk of some, somebody that, that, you know, accepting payments at the front window. So if you look here, I'm in Edwardsville, Bonner Springs or Baser. As you see, our step one is about four to 5,000 under. And so if I want to compete with those groups, I now have to look at my step four to be competitive or somewhere thereabouts, right, three or four. Now they hit step seven in our system, right? So when I say max, that's in whatever that system is, midpoint is mid. For us, step fours are midpoint, step sevens are max. If you had Bonner Springs, right, their midpoint is seven, their max is 13. And, and again, Baser doesn't really have that. But what you see is that, so we have a person gets to the max and they're not even comparison in pay or not comparison to Baser or Bonner Springs at the, at the mid. So there's then becomes the issue of if I'm there, what makes me stay, even if I get a one or one and a half percent COLA? Because these other cities, they're also doing COLAs to their pay plan. So we don't catch up, right? Again, I'm, I'm just pointing out, if I come over here to maintenance worker, quite honestly, we're a little bit better at the starting pay. So our starting pay, our step one is a little better in line, though still behind. Again, Baser is the most current of the pay plans. We have the same problem though. When our person hits step seven, and we have a couple of those, you know, these other cities, they're not even to the midpoint. So that means they, in theory, they could go to another city, start there below the midpoint and still have seven years of, of advancement in pay possibility. And then the third example, utility clerk, again, I pick these because these are positions in all three cities. You know, you can't compare our fire department because we're the only one with a full-paid fire department. So, so you can't go to, you know, Bonner Springs. I mean, they have paramedics, the top range of paramedics for them is $70,000. Ours is 50, I mean, but, but I don't know if you can compare those, right? Cause they don't do similar duties. These are three jobs do separate. Then you can see the same problem, maybe a little bit better. Here we're again, pretty close to being, you know, we're a little better than Bonner Springs on step one. Though our position takes on a little bit more duties as office manager. But so we, a little bit higher, a little lower than Baser. But again, they get to step seven, they're, you know, one, two, $3,000. They're, you know, one, two, three thousand dollars lower in the overall pay plan scheme. Again, I'm not here trying to say this position should get more money or this. These are just good examples of how our pay plan compares to these other pay plans, when you try to line them up. And we're in the world of competition. And, and we're, you know, we're trying to compete for the same labor force, and I think everybody would agree. And I don't care what kind of job it is today, the labor force is a difficult area to compete in. So my recommendations or suggestions and would like feedback is, you know, one of the, I think one of the best options is to expand out our compensation plan as far as number of steps. If we don't do anything else, having that opportunity for people to be competitive later in their career, right? We want people to come and we want them to stay. Again, every year, you, the elected body decides whether to fund the compensation plan or not. So if you have thirteen steps, or fifty steps, or five steps, you know, that's not the question tonight. If you approve it and there's a step, our steps are three, you move up. If, if, if you don't have steps, then you don't have step. But you, but you make that decision at the time of the budget, which is the reason why I want to have this discussion now, because it's the plan, not the budget. I think we could look at fewer grades and maybe have a bigger gap in those grades. That then, when somebody promotes up, we have room. And so instead of having to move them up two or three grades, we can move them up one or two grades. And again, they can come back down towards the bottom and have a longer progression of time with the city in the pay plan. So, and again, you're not going to see a, a, a plan before you tonight, because I'm really presenting this and getting the feedback. You know, if we want to look at what a particular position makes compared to other places. Then I think one of the things we need to do is having, have it consistent, right? I know, I know we've shown you all lots of data over the years. And the question comes in, why this city, or why this city, or why this thing, or why that thing? And I think what would be helpful is, you know, what, what group of cities do we think is comparable? Now, I don't think, you know, Grand Junction or, or, you know, some place in the far western Kansas is a comparable, Republic County, right? Is not a comparable to here. You know, when we've lost people for pay, they've gone to Overland Park, they've gone to Kansas City, Kansas, they've gone to Lawrence, Kansas. You know, they've gone to Bonner Springs. You know, we've had people go to those places. Now, do I think we can pay what Overland Park pays, or what Kansas City can pay? We can't, there's no doubt about that. But we should be able to compare to Edgerton's, where the Adoras, or Baser, Bonner Springs. I mean, we, we should be able to, to be a competitive marketplace. Understand, we don't have the resources to go compete with, you know, again, Overland Parks, Kansas City, Missouri, Kansas City, Kansas. And I'm not sure we want to, I, I mean, at some of those places, I think they're probably, you know, nobody wants to be overcompensated. But, but I mean, I, I think we would have to really look at the value of that, and I just don't think that's where we're at. But what cities, or, you know, what's our demographic comparison? And from my standpoint, then it's easy for me to come to you each year and say, here's our comparison this year compared to last year. Kind of just like we do with the budget, right? You can see what that is, and it may say, you know what, there's no adjustment needs to be made. You know, cost of living has been at point five, and we're still competitive in the market, and all we need to do is a step or not do that. But at least you have the data and the information to make that, I just want to make sure it's consistent. So when I come to you year after year after year, at least for a period of time, I'm not saying, well, this year we're going to compare to Baser. Next year, we're going to compare to Bonner, next year, we're going to compare to Lawrence. Because then there's no faith in the system, and that's not what I want. And then, and this really goes to the last, the, the, the next concept is, you know, what are the policy guidelines you want us to have? So what information do you need as a policy body to say? Yes, a step increase should be approved, no, a step increase shouldn't be approved. Yes, a COLA should be approved, no, a COLA shouldn't be approved. You know, what kind of information can we as staff make sure you have so you can make that decision? Because that, that's really, that then becomes the issue in the budget process, right? And, and, you know, if I tell you everybody's going to get a three percent raise this year, guess what? Pay is going to go up three percent. Now, I can tell you, over the last five years, we've seen about six percent increase in overall pay. But we also added six new positions, but our overall budget on an annual basis, right? Our annual budget's grown at about four percent. So yes, we've seen pay increase mainly because of new people, but our overall budget actually hasn't grown as fast. And, and, you know, so to say that you automatically are going to see an increase in the budget is not necessarily true. Until we have the data and can make the information. So that's really what I wanted to bring forth tonight. If I'm on the right track, then I can, you know, I can come back to you with a plan that then can get reviewed and accepted. And that, again, that's pretty typical, right? I can, I can hand you Baser's pay plan right now, right? I can hand you Bonner Springs' pay plan, I can hand you Shawnee's pay plan. You know, you can pick us, you know, you can pick a place generally and have a pay plan. So that's, that's not, somewhat, that's not the hard part. The hard part is, is, is a step and grade plan the plan we want to have? And if so, how do we set the step and grade plan up to make it an effective compensation tool for this community? And, and you're right, we're different than the other cities, but at the same time, there's, we compete with other cities.
I'm hearing your recommendation might be to expand our, our grades, or steps, whatever.
I think the steps need to be, I think, you got a, you got a compression, and that's the problem. And, 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 and let me be clear, if somebody's at step seven today, that doesn't mean they go to step thirteen. So they, they may be at the top now, they don't get to go to the top of any new pay plan, right? So, so, you know, yes, it'd be an issue for the twenty-twenty-two budget. But we're not talking about moving people today, we're just talking about the physical plan.
Mike, let me ask you a question, just so I'm clear.
Right.
Are the hourly employees steps and grades and salaries employees, men, max and?
Well, we had talked about that, but our plan right now is everybody is step and grade for everybody, top to bottom. And I will tell you that Basers is the same way, so, so they, they got one to twenty-six. And in, in Bonner Springs, I mean, Bonner Springs, step and grade, all positions. Baser is men, mid-max, all positions with the exception of their city administrator.
Has it ever been discussed to do hourly and salary one way?
As separate, I mean, yeah, I had, I had somewhat brought that up before, breaking those two up. Because we, for the pay, payroll, right, when we pay people, we have to put in our hourly people in an hourly basis. But our salary people, we put in on an annual salary basis, and then it calculates that rate. Because if I take a vacation, as an example, right, it just, it just comes out of my, my block of vacation. When an hourly person takes it, they may take one hour, two hour, three hour, four hour. And that actually shows eight hours of vacation at fifteen dollars an hour equals X, right? So we can break those two up, and actually, I think that's a good way to do it. But I wasn't sure that that was where the, the consensus was at on that.
Would it be hard to put a model together like that?
Say what?
Would it be hard to put a model together like that?
No, not from my standpoint.
And I'm talking the minimum.
Right.
Is a range of three salaries. The medium is a range of three salaries, and the max is a range of three salaries.
Okay.
That kind of compensation.
Okay, I, I hadn't thought about it like that, but, but you're, yeah, I, I, I hear, I've seen that kind of system in the past. For salary people versus, and then hourly people. Right, yeah, I mean, I think there's different models out there. Is one model better than another? No, I mean, I, I think that they're all models. They're, you know, again, I, I think fundamentally, and I, I believe we all agree to this. I mean, we want, you know, and I've said, I mean, I want a well-paid, well-educated, well-trained, well-equipped workforce. That doesn't mean the, the highest paid, that they have all the newest and latest gadgets that everybody's driving in a brand-new truck every year, I mean, right, we can't afford that, nor should that be our goal. But we do want, but we do want our workforce properly compensated. We want them to be here, we want them to work for us, we want them to do a good job every single day. That's, that's what we want out of our employees, that's what we should expect and demand out of our employees, and I think they do that.
So those, those that serve well should be well-served.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to get clear. Does, does Margaret's theory come in to the expanded steps? Or is there two different types of plans?
Well, I think.
The reason I'm asking that is, do you then prepare two different? Or this one, one, one option that, that includes a melding of, of all that?
I think, and I'll, I'll, I'll say it, and then, and then she can correct me. Is that our hourly employees would be on a traditional stepping grade plan. And our salary employees would be on a separate plan that has a, a min, mid, and max. And around those, there would be kind of a, a range for, for men, there'd be a range for middle and a range for max of, I, I kind of got three steps if I'm going to use that. So mid may be, I'll just, I'm just going to use around him, you know, the men may be fifteen, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And depend on, on that person coming here, what their skill level is, their education and things. They might start at fourteen, and another person may come here for the same job. But yet, they've got, you know, college degree, and they've got four years of experience, and they've got, you know, special certification. And in order to hire them, we have to hire them at the top of the mid, the minimum, and they, they're going to get sixteen dollars now. I, I think that's kind of conceptually what you're talking about, okay, yes, I understand that.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're directing you to come back with a proposed plan.
Okay, okay, right, I, I got it, good. Is there anything else in this? I mean, I mean, I, I mean, again, I don't want to. Do you, I, I guess the other thing I would like, I mean, do you, do you agree that we need to have some system in place around that third and fourth bullet point? That is, who are we going to compare ourselves to for the purposes of setting those, those pay ranges? And what information do you need on an annual basis to make that decision? Because again, you, you always have the decision, always have, always will, of whether or not to approve a pay increase in any given budget year. Every council everywhere has those discussions, it's not an automatic. It's right in our personnel manual. I mean, the only time anybody really gets a, so to speak, an automatic pay increase is when they start here, and they, when we give them an offer letter. It says, when you complete your probationary period, which may be six months or a year, depending if you're in public safety or not. You will move to the next step or whatever at X dollars. And thereafter, your pay is set annually by, you know, action of the city council through the, through the budget. We put that same language every time we do it, and that's how we've always worked.
Mike, when we discussed this before, we, I believe we're on, at the consensus to have a work session about this. So we could map out all of the costs and expenses. One thing we haven't talked about in keeping everything apples to apples is benefits, how do our benefits compare? And that really should be something that we're looking at when we're talking about salary and retaining employees and making sure they're happy. I think it's really important to give people somewhere to go and, and keep moving up. But there's a lot, a lot of moving pieces here, and so I just didn't know if, why we aren't having a workshop on it when that's what we had discussed before.
Well, I think partially that was tonight, was to try to fulfill that. But again, I was mainly focused on the comp plan. I mean, we can, I mean, I can tell you the thing about these two cities. Well, actually, we were in their pay plan analysis. Bonner Springs has the same basic benefit plans that we do as far as they're, they're an NPR city. And I think Baser is seriously considering joining NPR because their, their benefits are, at least by their study, was less than what the market was. So they actually, the one thing they noted in theirs was that they needed to upgrade their benefits, that their benefits were less. Now, that CSS system gives some data around that, right? So, so what is the, you know, what, what's the value of some of those benefits? I mean, every cities will always have some unique things, right? So, for example, and we can change it, you know, for paramedics, so, so paramedics is a hard position to get. So we give a stipend for paramedic. So every firefighter, EMT, paramedic is, is at the same level. But if you have a paramedics license, then you get additional funding for that. And, you know, I somewhat don't, i- if everybody in our department had a paramedics license, I don't think that's a bad thing for us. Because of the size of our department, and, you know, whoever hops off the truck, that's a paramedic. And sometimes you need two of those in the back of a truck. You know, it's nice to have that extra pair of hands. Now, typically, your captains aren't paramedics, because that's, that's just, you know, they're not, they may be a paramedic. But a lot of times, you'll see captains and fire departments drop their paramedics because of the extra training. And they don't really do patient care most places here, or one of our captains is a paramedic. I mean, and there's times we have to pull him off being the captain to be in the, the ambulance. And of course, there's always somebody there to step into that role for that period of time, so. But I, but I hear what you're saying, Ms. Kahar, is we can also, as part of this, you know, do some comparisons of benefits and how our benefits compare to other cities in, in, you know, in, in this. So again, a lot of things we do are typical in other cities, right? Education pay, or those types of things are pretty, pretty typical. But we can, we can lay those extras out as well.
This, it's pretty overwhelming to me because it's, there's a lot of detail.
There is.
And, and not ever working in this arena of figuring out salaries and who to play and pay and so forth. Always been in small business, either that or large corporate where they told me what they were going to pay me. And I think it would be good to have a mix of cities. Because we, while we are not, we can't compete necessarily with Overland Park, we need to know where they are.
Yes.
And we need to be able to understand, I think one of the challenges we've had through the years is longevity. Is, oh, you know, if somebody comes to work for Edwardsville, they say, man, the next four years will be great, and then I'll start looking. You know, it's, there's got to be a preconceived notion when they compare scales around, around the metropolitan area. So I really would like to help eliminate some of that process of, of somebody saying, yeah, it's a good place to start, but I know I'm not going to end there. I'd like to be a place that somebody, or somebody could start and end of their career there if, if they perform well for the city. And so I, I personally rely on the chiefs and yourself for those structures and those plans that would best meet your needs when you're out competing for, for recruits. I, I, I don't feel, me personally, I'm not qualified to enter very deep into that conversation other than what I want to accomplish at the end of the day. Okay, but I'd like to see a mix of cities our size and others that we're competing with. The Parkvilles, the, you know, the Overland Parks, or Mariams, Shawnee, you know, Baser, Bonner, Spring Hill. So we can compare our own, you know, to our own size, and we can see what, what the next level up is looking like.
And I think one of the challenges, not, it's, you don't see a lot of moving back and forth between Kansas and Missouri. We do see some of it, and that mainly has more to do, in its early, with local government retirement plans. So once you're in that retirement plan for seven, eight years, you're going, I, I'm not going to jump over there and start all over. So, so typically, retirement plans keep you in the state. Right, I mean, so most of the time, you know, unless it's a, you know, a, a, somebody really, they, they, you know, they work one or two years. And they worked over in Parkville, or maybe they worked for Kansas City, Missouri, kind of an internship or something. And then they're going to get their first job, and they, they decide to come over to Kansas. Once they're, you know, once, once you're in that retirement system, five, six, seven years, you start going, oh, I'm close to vesting. I'm going to stay with vesting, and then, and then once you're in there, you know, people like Mark and I, you're like going, it's not that far away where I, you know, I, I'm good, right? I got my years of service, age and service. So you, you don't see too much of that jumping border stuff. So I'm not sure there's a lot of value always in looking to the Missouri side. because of that one aspect.
See, there's just a good example of, of me not knowing that, you know, what you're, what you're dealing with on a day-to-day basis.
I can't think of, I mean, I, we've had a couple of people come from the Missouri side and the law enforcement and come over here. I think I can think of one that went that direction, but they started in Missouri. So they, we're in Missouri, they came over here, and they went back to Missouri. You, you might see that, but it's pretty seldom that we see. I don't think we've ever had anybody from the fire department go across the state line, and you would think as close as we are that that might happen. But unlike the private sector, with, you know, the way state retirement systems are, they don't really go with you, right? And, and we're in the private sector, if you got a 401K or something, they don't care what state you're in other than taxes.
I have one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Question comment, I know I've asked this before.
No.
Does the city perform exit interviews?
Yes, we do. And those come to me, so.
You perform the interview or?
Well, we, we have a, a form that, so every employee that leaves has the option to participate. So it's not mandatory. And then if they, they get to elect, but if they elect, they, they can elect to come see me. I mean, if they want to not see me, I guess that's true too. So sometimes they may talk to the department head or chief, but we want them to have that opportunity that's independent of their chain of command.
Do you do that with retirees as well?
Um, yes, I mean, I, I don't know if we've, I'm trying to think of the last person we had that was a retiree.
John. John Sauer probably was.
No, we've had since then.
We've had retired?
Yeah, we had one out of the fire department, but I, I don't know. Oh, yeah, yeah.
You don't find out, you don't find out a lot of information.
Oh, yeah. And we ask them, and I don't, I don't have the form in front of me, we, we, you know, we, we ask them the question is, you know, you know, kind of, you know, what made your decision to leave, right? And it's somewhat open, you know, you know, what would you say are the best things about working here? What things would you like to see changed about here? I mean, it's like four questions, right? It's not a long, detailed thing, but, but yeah, we, when somebody announces they're leaving, then they're, they're given that, you know, they're given that opportunity, and I'm going to say it's probably fifty-fifty, I mean, some just like, hey, I'm, I'm going, and I'm, you know, and I, I'm a happy, I'm happy, I was happy here, but I'm going to be happy going there, and they just want to go. I was like, okay.
Hundred reasons, right.
So, but yes, we do have a formal exit view, exit interview process, and every employee should be receiving that when they leave.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next item on the agenda then is the ordinance number ten forty-one granting telecommunications franchises to Unite Private Networks LLC. Whatever that means.
Well, I, no, I won't stand up there. Typically, don't get a lot of questions regarding franchises, so this is just a telecommunications franchise, mostly, I believe, to install fiber right now. Really nothing specific to it unless you have a question regarding the agreement, or it's your standard franchise. It's very similar, if not identical, to the MCI Metro that you approved a couple of years ago. So it's, it's also consistent with that agreement.
So I looked up the, the company Unite, and it, they only serve municipalities and schools, so where's the, where's it going? Why is it going through our city, and where's it end up?
Do you want me to take that one? Yeah, so, so it, that's really did, UPN really started as part of the grant that the UG received to expand the network predominantly for public safety purposes, schools of public safety. UPN already has fiber in a number of cities. But yeah, they're really a backhaul provider and not really a provider of direct service like a Verizon or a Spectrum or somebody like that. So that's what triggered it. Their current path that's being proposed roughly will come down Ninety-Eighth Street from State Avenue, Ninety-Eighth Street South, all the way to Wood End, and then come around up Ninth Street to, I think, Blake, over to this facilities here. Because the police department, for us, the police department is the hub of our, of our network. And then go back up K thirty-two, or go up to K thirty-two, go over to Bonner, but there'll be a leg that goes up to the elementary school. And then it'll pick up for us, it picks up our lift stations with a fiber, fiber connection, picks up Bonner Springs for their water sewer plants, then goes in, picks up their, their city hall, you know, police station, those facilities, the schools, and then goes north back up to State Avenue ultimately. So that's really what drove it.
Is this the cares deal?
It is part of, it was the second phase of cares where it was all around broadband expansion, but predominantly it was around education and public, public facilities. It also would give the opportunity to tie signals together under like the metro, the, the metro program for signalizations. But that's what's driving it, so they don't really have customers. They, we'll, we'll be their customer, but we'll effectively, we'll be almost like an owner in that program, so. We, some of the details are still being worked out on the MOU, which is separate, about what contributions we'll make into this, as you remember, we had said we would, we would contribute to it. And we'll, you know, make decisions of what that is. So the MOU will probably be coming back to the council in a few weeks to a month. But that's really about who owns the fibers, and, you know, what are they going to be used for, what, what compensation? So in the future, they could sell, say, say, one of the cell companies needed backbone, you know, so they got a tower setting up here at Verizon, and they need to get back to the main, and I don't understand this, the chief could probably, he's much more technical, but they need to get back to the main switch in KC MO. So there's a big building where all that stuff goes to. They might, Verizon may then contract with UPN, which at that point, it may trigger a franchise fee, right? Because now they're providing service in the city to a private entity, or Spectrum needs to, they want to provide service, but they don't have fiber optic in that particular area. They might buy that and then serve a final customer, business customer, residential customers, et cetera. Today, we don't envision right now that there's any end customer other than the public entities being the, the three cities and the school.
So there's no real revenue coming in from the franchise.
I make a motion to authorize, consider ordinance number ten forty-one, telecommunication franchise to UPN LLC.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
Our city attorney was going to make his comment, I'd like to hear that.
No, I was just going to say that there's two parts to the, what we're working on here. Obviously, there's the technical aspects of it. This just goes to the agreements among the parties as to what this agreement is going to look like. So in the end, we will have ownership of some of the fiber that's in there. And that's our advantage to us.
Very good, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number ten forty-one, would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Thank you. City manager's report. Make a brief.
Uh, Mayor, I don't know the opposite side of what is on the report, do I have anything to add?
We can't hear you, Mike. We can't hear you, Mike.
Got it, sorry, I was just saying that I don't have anything other than what I have on the city manager's report unless, I don't think anybody else has anything to add.
Very good, okay, well, we're going to move on to the council comments, and, and we're going to just start offline with Carolyn.
Hey, guys, I don't have much tonight. I was really saddened to hear about the accident downtown a while ago. I wanted to mention if we had looked into securing that area so we don't have future accidents, or if anyone's looked into that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want me to respond?
You, you can, yeah.
Well, I, I, I don't know that we have a mechanism, I, I mean, it's railroad property. Obviously, they're aware of the situation, and then the playground that's near there is owned by the Mobile Home Park. So, I mean, it's, there's not really a, there is no public access to that area, legal public access to that area. So a, any adjustments would have, you know, as far as fencing or railing on the railroad would have to be brought forth by the railroad. And I, I haven't had any discussions with them subsequent to that. Certainly don't mind having one, but, but it would have to be something that would come from the railroad.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, are you finished, Carolyn?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right, Chuck, you're next.
Nothing.
Okay. Margaret?
I have a couple of comments, the fire department, thank you for the vegetation burn-off. Or several places they've done that, it looks a thousand times better. I hope they're going to keep continuing to do that because there's places that just look a hundred times better. Police department, there's an opening?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have one, we hired two.
Oh.
One will go to the academy on Sunday, and one month later, another. We just finalized one of them where.
Hey, Mike, we can't hear the response.
Sorry.
Okay, we're sharing microphones. So the question was that we're, that we are hiring, we have, we've hired, we've made conditional offers to two. And one of them, of those conditional offer, we finalized the hiring, and, and that person will start the academy on Sunday, actually Monday, but goes on Sunday, and then a month later, we'll have another one go to the academy. And both of those are educated individuals that work for the sheriff's office.
For Wyandotte County?
Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office, yeah, both of them live in Wyandotte County, and we still have one more to fill yet, one more position.
So this, these aren't additions, these are just to fill your staff?
Yes, correct.
I saw that on Facebook, I thought, I didn't know, I didn't know you'd mentioned it or not. Interesting, okay. Um, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Chuck?
You're going last here. Maybe everybody will get everything.
So, Mike, are, what utilities are left to move up on the ninety, or the Edwardsville Drive River View project?
Uh, the, 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 the first one was electric, and they've got the poles moved, they got the wires changed over. I think they, there was one home connection they had to make, I think that got done today. And then they have to bore where the roundabout would be, and so they're supposed to be completely done by the twenty-sixth. I think the gas company is about complete with theirs. The only gap they have is on River View where the box cover does that, so they're going to basically cap the line on either side because that's like fifteen feet, eighteen feet deep, so they'll be over the top of the box. And then Verizon, which they're out of the way, but they have to, they'll probably come back after final grading because theirs is all underground. Though I noticed they were boring in front of the telephone poles today, so I have a question of, is that Verizon decided to go ahead and get out of the way now, which would make more sense, but that, that's really what we understand.
And BPU with the fire hydrants?
Uh, they'll move, theirs are primarily going to get moved during construction because they're much more grade-related issues. Because they have parts of it where their line would be, you know, current line would be five or six feet out of the ground in places where it'd be fifteen feet deep, and you just, you know, that one, you want to try to keep into that, you know, they'd like to keep that probably closer to that five to eight feet depth. So they'll, they'll be in there, but once grading's done, they, they can move pretty quick. The water's actually probably one of the easier ones to move. We're, we're still hoping a twenty-sixth start date. Uh, but, but again, we couldn't move, Spectrum couldn't move, they're on pole cable until the poles got moved. So they're probably two weeks behind the power, but we're hoping they'll be out of the way. And so they can be working at the same time as the contractor.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Yes.
Here.
I warned you, I was going to ask about the progress on the silent crossings, Mike, on the bid openings and so forth.
Yes, sir, you did warn me. Uh, so the bids have opened for the Quiet Zone project. The, so, so that, the UG, right, that's their project, so they put out the bids, those bids have been approved. The low bidder was Kansas heavy construction. The total bid was for all the crossings, so that starts, basically it swings the road and goes all the ones through the city. Uh, the total bid was around eight hundred and eighty thousand, as I recall, for all that, so. So I think it was pretty good bids from what I saw, they had seven bidders, six or seven bidders. Uh, so they were low, I think the highest one was about one point two, somewhere in that range. But they were pretty comparable to the engineer's estimate, I don't remember exact, so. Where they, yeah, it wasn't a lot, but it's, yeah. Uh, so they have, they now have their notice to proceed. But they then, they can't make requests from the railroad until they have a notice to proceed, so they have that. They then now have to complete the railroad's permits, and that takes roughly thirty to sixty days before they can start construction. We haven't had a pre-construction meeting, so I don't know what the plan is as far as are they going to start east and go west, west and go east, try to get Fourth Street done and go both directions, so we just, we haven't had that. I, I will say, we're, we're somewhat not able to move forward on Fourth Street because we still have the one parcel which has been filed in court, and we expect shortly, if there's not another answer, that the, the appraisers have been appointed by the judge, the three appraiser panel. And typically, they have their hearing within thirty days, and we're approaching that time. Once, in my opinion, once you have that hearing, there's not much reason not to just go through the process because quite honestly, you've spent all the money. I mean, you, as far as the cost, because we have to pay for the appraisers, so at that point, you're out the dollars, and you're best to move forward, so.
Thank you, that's, that's, that's good news, I think. Uh, the other thing is, I was going to ask you, who dug the ditch west of the bank? Did the city do that where the ATM is? Can we solidify that whole a little bit? It's kind of like driving through a marsh, I mean, it was good that you put rocks in it, but can we put something on that maybe? Because you kind of squished down in it now. Yeah, I was glad to see that, and there's a lot of people at the bank that have been making good comments about that part of it. I think you could probably find Volkswagen down in there somewhere. And then the other thing is, I went down to City Park here three times yesterday during the soccer, and, and there was a lot of people down there playing soccer, and it was a lot of compliments on that. And I think people are just so ready to be done with all this COVID stuff that it was just a gorgeous day, and it was fun to see all those kids down there and our park people, so thank you for that.
Okay, I have nothing further to add. You are adjourned.